Okay. You're connected, you're ready? Okay. So we are. It's seven oh two PM and we are recording this meeting. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Can I start? All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to C E C twenty five special meeting. Oh, me too. On class size reduction law. Thank you for your attendance this evening. I know it's very cold tonight. Tonight's discussion may be of interest to many of you, and that's why we're here. The purpose of this meeting is. An informational section to discuss how the class size reduction law will affect the families and students in our school districts. We are having tonight's meeting because Senators John New sponsored this bill requiring New York City to develop a class size reduction plan to reduce class sizes over the next five years. And this plan include. All right. And this five year plan. We're we're in the first year of the five year plan. And the perfect and the achievement, the chief goal is no more of twenty students in grades kindergarten to third grade, twenty three students in grades four to eight and twenty five students in high school. Governor Holko signed this bill into law in September twenty twenty two, and we just now passed year one of five year. Senator Lou will be having an education discussion with the public at Flushing Library this Thursday, November thirtieth at six thirty PM. So we want to gather questions and your concerns tonight so that we can bring them to Senator Lou on Thursday. I'm very excited tonight as it is C E C twenty five first collaboration with the other C E Cs and P E P from across the school districts. I hope this will be the beginning of a collaboration of more collaboration in the future. So tonight we have Al Su Hu from C E C twenty six. C E C twenty six covers Bayside, Douglas and Little Neck, Fresh Meadows, Oakland Gardens, Glen Oaks. We have Deb Alexander from C E C thirty on Zoom. That covers Astoria, Corona, East Elm, Paris, Jackson Heights, Long Island City, Sunny Side and West Side. Fijo Ram Ramchatan from C E C twenty eight on Zoom covering Briarwood, Forest Hills, Jamaica, Kew Gardens, Regal Park, Richmond Hill and South Ocean Park. Steve Still from C E C twenty also on Zoom covering Borough Park, Kensington, Bay Ridge, Tiger Heights, Bath Beach, Brunsonhurst, Sunset Park and Fort Hamilton in Brooklyn. We also have Lucia Caraxolo Boylan from C E C thirty one covering the entire Staten Island. And we have F B Sacree, the Queens representative to the Panel for Education Policy. Venus C Zhang, the Staten Island representative to Panel for Educational Policy and Alyssa O'Shea, former council member of citywide council on high school. And I also want to note that because this topic is of so many people's concern, we also have some U F T rep tonight. We have Lamar Hughes who's behind us. Mary Bacaro, David Walser, Joe Kessler. We have our interim superintendent, Dr. Mike Dantona. And some of our some of his staff members as well as Philip Wong from District twenty four. So welcome to our meeting tonight. So at this time, we will start our discussion and I will turn the floor over to Al.
Okay, thank you Wendy and C E C twenty five for hosting this meeting. It's very important that the facts and the real story about the class size law is disclosed to the general public, especially the parent community, and that's the entire purpose of this meeting. So let's, we have a slide presentation. Bob, would you be kind enough to share your screen, please?
Should be sharing screen now.
Yep, please share the screen. Hey, when you're ready, we'll. Got it. All right. All right. So please advance to the next slide, please. All right. So yep, the agenda, right? So the agenda for tonight is straightforward. We're going to explain why the class size law as it's written is harmful to our communities. And we'll point out during the presentation. You know, the class size law is seriously flawed. It's obvious that the authors of the law lack any practical experience and knowledge in managing and implementing a highly complex and costly program such as this. So let me make this clear that none of us in this room oppose smaller class sizes. And as a result of our presentation, we will provide recommendations so that we can improve the law so that it can be successfully implemented. Now, there are a lot of detractors out there saying, hey, we're here to repeal the law. It's absolutely not true. We want to work with all stakeholders to make sure that the law will succeed. So let's get to the next slide, please, Bob. So about us. So we're all elected C E C and P E P members who served on the D O E's class size working group for the past six months. And unlike many other members of the working group, we do not have, I mean, we we do have professional experience that is relevant to analyzing a law and providing a valid critique. Next slide, please. So introduction. Right? Let's go back a little bit. Right, yes, stay there. All right, so. Why are we here? So every one of us joined the class size working group because we want to see class sizes reduced in our overcrowded schools, especially in District twenty five, twenty six, twenty thirty one, all of the Queens, South Brooklyn, Staten Island. However, while we were serving on the working group, we found that many of the members exhibit conflicts of interest and don't necessarily make decisions in the best interest of our communities. And I'll get to that a little bit more in a minute. The other point is if any of you have ever had conversations with principals and teachers in your neighborhood schools on the effect of class size law on their particular schools. I'll bet that most of them will tell you that they are very concerned about the disruption that the law will cause a school and to the parent community. So personally, I have received many comments from principals and teachers who think that the class size law is destined to fail. But at the same time, will cause significant pain to families unless it is amended. Next slide, please. So, all right, so this slide, this is information that was pulled from the D O E's class size reduction plan that everyone can download from D O E's site on class size reduction. The slide is arranged in this way. It's in two parts. And it essentially ranks the thirty two districts by the rate of compliance with class size caps. From the most compliant to the least compliant. So for example, if you look at the upper left, the first rank district is District twenty three in Brooklyn with seventy seven percent of classes meeting the caps as defined by law. On the other hand, if you look at the bottom right, that is last place, and that's the worst ranked district, which is District twenty six where I'm the C E C president. Only twenty two percent of the classes are compliant. Next worst is Staten Island, District thirty one, which covers all Staten Island. Third from last is District twenty five. Now look at the color coding. Magenta represents all the districts in Queens, right, twenty six, twenty five, twenty eight, twenty four, thirty, twenty seven, twenty nine. Green represents Staten Island. And Cyan represents the districts in South Brooklyn, fifteen, twenty one, twenty and twenty two. So you notice how these districts completely fill up the bottom of the table in terms of compliance with the law. So the common theme is that all of these areas I just mentioned are the most overcrowded in the city. And that poses a problem for all of us because of how the class size law is written. It's essentially a one size fit all approach and treats overcrowded districts like ours the same as the nearly compliant schools or districts like District twenty three in East New York, Brooklyn. So the implications of this fallacy is very problematic. As we'll get to in later slides. Next slide, please. So why are we concerned? Well, first, there are penalties for non-compliance. There's a loss of state funding. And essentially, the law is allowing the state to hold school funding hostage to ensure compliance with the law. So what is the only acceptable solution to overcrowded districts? The answer is building schools, right? We need capacity to reduce class sizes. The law is not, does not work that way. It's just forcing everything to be completed within five years. And that's a problem. So what is the length of time that is needed to construct a school? The answer is five years. And when does the law require a hundred percent compliance? Guess what? Five years. Now, is it possible to build all the needed schools in five years? The answer is only a fool would say yes. The School Construction Authority has been developing about two dozens projects at any given time. Now the law is requiring S C A to increase construction by an order of magnitude, right, up to two hundred schools to be constructed in five years, which I think any sane person will know that is impossible. So given that it's not possible to build all the schools that we need within five years, and the fact that the law requires a hundred percent compliance in five years, and what can be done? Well, the other options are pretty drastic. And there's lists there, like tapping, auto school enrollment, and also rezoning schools, which is exactly why principals and teachers in our districts are concerned. So the average parent in our districts are not aware of the massive disruptions to families caused by the law, and we need to publicize this. Now, the last point is there funding to hire all the need teachers? And is it possible to hire so many teachers in such a short period of time? We'll answer those questions in later slides. Next slide, please. All right, so why did we write this report, this report in opposition to the final report that will be released very shortly? So there were over forty members of the class size working group. But parent interests were not, were surprisingly not well represented on the working group. And we believe that most of the parent members are fortunately compromised by serious conflicts of interest. For example, there were staffers of elected officials involved in passing the class size law on this working group. They're appointed parent members by elected officials with a political interest in supporting the law. And there were members of advocacy groups who would do anything, including throwing entire communities under the bus just in order to advance their agenda. And lastly, there were senior union leaders actively and loudly supporting the law. Next slide, please. All right, so. As you know, the class size working group is tasked to deliver a report of recommendations to the D O E.
Right. I'm sorry, Al, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, I, I'm gonna assume that not everybody's completely like familiar with what the implications are. So I just want to give a concrete example. I wish we had a slide on it. My apologies for not making a slide. I just want to people to understand the extent of what happens. Right now, let's say you have an elementary school and the third grade has three hundred and twenty students. Currently, the maximum class size for third grade is thirty two students in a class. So if you have a third grade with thirty, three hundred and twenty students, that means that you need ten classrooms and ten teachers to handle that third grade. With the new class size rule, the the maximum class size will be twenty. So if you divide three hundred and twenty students by twenty, now you need sixteen. You need sixteen classrooms and sixteen teachers. What does that mean to a principal? That means that the principal needs to find sixty percent. We're going from ten to sixteen. You need sixty percent more classroom space and you need sixty percent more teachers. So I just need, I just wanted to give this as a concrete example and then we'll, Al will continue with, with, you know, some implications and things like that. But I just wanted like people here to have a concrete example of what really is meant by this, but like by this class size bill and how it affects schools. So this is one example. I hope the math is easy. We're going from ten to sixteen. That's a sixty percent increase both in the classroom space requirement and in the number of teachers required. Thank you. Al, please continue. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. We'll have plenty of time to go over different scenarios and examples after we finish these slides. Thanks, Effie. All right, so as you know, the class size working group is tasked to deliver a report of recommendations with D O E to consider for implementation of class size reduction. However, because the working group was overrun with members with special interests, concerns of the parent communities, unfortunately, were ignored. And all of us on the panel, as well as some neutral members, were disgusted by the antics of the special interest members. And therefore, we dis, we disavow ourselves from the recommendations that would be published in the final report. And we completely disagree with the entire process that was involved in producing the one sided final report that would be released, I believe, this Friday. So in opposition, we wrote a competing report that we believe addresses substantive issues with the law and its implementation. And we'll walk through some of these highlights in our report, of our report. Next slide, please. All right, so this is a chart that we that we built. The D O E provided the working group with data for all schools indicating their compliance with class size caps and the proficiency rates in state exams at these schools. So let's try to break this down. The plot on the left is E L A proficiency and the plot on the right is math proficiency. So what we did was we took the data and we ranked the schools by compliance with the caps and distributed them in quartiles or four different buckets of two hundred eighty schools each. So the first quartile represents the two hundred eighth schools with the highest compliance rate or conversely, the lowest class sizes. So that's the the dot where you see the number one on the X axis. On the opposite side of the spectrum, quartile four, that represents the two hundred eighty schools that are the most overcrowded. So the Y axis represents the average percentage test proficiency of students in those schools. So if you look at the plot on the left side for E L A proficiency, you look at quartile one, which is the least overcrowded. But it has, those schools have an average E L A proficiency of less than thirty five percent. And over on the right, in math, the same group of schools have an average proficiency of less than twenty five percent. And if you look at the other points, the story is starkly different for the more crowded schools. You can see that the more overcrowded schools are, the higher are the proficiency rates. And even more interesting is the linear relationship that you can observe in the expectations. If you follow that line from one, two and three, you'll see a kind of straight line relationship. And then for point four, you see a huge jump. So that means schools that are extremely overcrowded far exceed expectations. So the bottom line is this, students attending overcrowded schools perform much better than those in less crowded schools. And those students in the most overcrowded schools perform exceptionally well. This in front of you is incontrovertible evidence that small class sizes is not the panacea or the magic bullet that politicians, advocacy groups and union leaders are claiming that it is. So more on this topic on the next slide, and I'll turn over the mic to C E C twenty president, Steve Stowe.
Thank you, Al. And I just want to thank Wendy and everyone from C E C twenty five for having me tonight and holding this event. I think it's very important. Everyone needs to know, and I'm going to repeat this. I repeat this to anyone I can. The research on class size reduction is mixed, inconclusive. There is one study from the nineteen eighties that showed some positive impacts, grades K through three, and only when you get class sizes down to between thirteen and seventeen students. Otherwise, there is totally inconclusive evidence and any backer of the class size reduction effort will invariably point to the one study, like I said, done in Tennessee in the nineteen eighties, as they're almost the sole basis of evidence for the class size reduction. Again, like Al said, if we could have small class sizes, we'll take them. But no one can argue that the impacts on learning differ significantly consistently from smaller class sizes. We list a few links here, some studies that have been done in the last several decades on class size research. I'm not gonna, I think the most effective is to just read sort of a quick summary sentence from some of them. One meta-analysis concludes, overall, the evidence suggests at best a small effect on reading achievement. There is negative but statistically insignificant effects on mathematics. The Brookings Institute has written several papers on this, and a member who used to work at Brookings was on the class size working group, who has published some of this research. The Brookings Institute has written, class size reduction has been shown to work for some students in some grades in some states and countries, but its impact has been found to be mixed or not discernible in other settings and circumstances that seem similar. It is very expensive. The costs and benefit of class size mandates need to be carefully weighed against all the alternatives. More on that later. And then finally, a really important point is that this has been tried before at a very large scale in several states, and it hasn't worked. The state of California implemented a class size reduction law in nineteen ninety six. They abandoned it in two thousand thirteen. There's been several research papers on the impacts of it. One of them was done by an organization called EdSource, which pulled together four or five different think tanks to study the results. Some of the conclusions are analysis of the relationship of class size reduction to student achievement were inconclusive. Class size reduction was associated with declines in teacher qualifications and a more inequitable distribution of credential teachers. Classroom space and dollars were taken from other programs to support class size reduction. I'm gonna leave it there. We can go to the next slide, please. We talk about costs, and there's sort of two components to this. One, how to pay for it, and then two, what it will cost. The media, the coverage of the New York State law and the parties that support and oppose the law are currently debating on whether there is funding available. There is no funding available for this law. There was a lawsuit several years ago to get the state to give New York City all of the money under the state aid formula. That lawsuit was successful. That money has been paid to the city over the last three years. It is fully included in the current year budget. There's no more new money coming from the state. The class size law just begins this year, and now we have to implement it over the next, you know, through twenty twenty eight. So anything that we do now to implement the class size law has to be paid from new funding sources. This chart just shows the the dollar amount. Everyone talks about one point three billion has been made available. In fact, we direct from, from our own research, direct from the Department of Education, this money is all allocated. It's all in the Fair Student Funding Formula. It's all in what's called Contracts for Excellence. It funds different school programs. And it's all part of the funding teacher salaries under the new U F T contract and in regular ongoing teacher salaries and benefits. So the funding, there is no new funding. Anything we do, there would need to be a funding source identified or cuts made in other areas. And I don't need to tell anyone here. I think that the City of New York budget right now is extremely pressured already. Next slide, please. On the cost side, there's been a lot, there's been several estimates of this law in particular. There have been three organizations, two of which are independent. Well, there's the Independent Budget Office, which is a third party non-think tank. They ran an estimate that showed the law would cost between one point six to one point nine billion per year. The D O E has provided its own analysis. We provide the links here. They show one point three to one point nine billion per year, depending on how the law is implemented. And then, you know, those of us on this call from the class, from the working group, we ran an analysis that showed at maximum the law would be two point two billion dollars. So settling out around one point nine billion is kind of what we think. Sort of makes sense. By comparison, the D O E budget is thirty seven billion. So it's a very significant amount of money. Just to put this in context, during the recession of two thousand seven, two thousand nine, the, the City of New York projected budget gaps of somewhere around eight, nine, ten percent. If we layer on the class size law, projected budget gaps will go to somewhere around eleven, twelve percent, so even higher than what we were talking about during the Great Recession. Budget cuts will be required if we implement the law. Again, this is something parents, this is something policyholders, stakeholders need to be aware of. If you want to have small class sizes, you gotta pay for it. And if, if, if we choose to implement the class size law, the money has to come from somewhere. And I don't need to tell parents in this room or on this call that there's lots of programs out there, some which, which we really sort of value that that could potentially be at risk if we choose to move ahead with the class size laws it currently is. Next slide, please. Al, did you want to take this one?
No, you can go ahead.
Sure, this is just, we'll sort of, I'll sort of go quickly through some of these, but there's the law is very brief. Anyone who's seen it sees that it has, you know, it's, I think it's one, one or two pages. It's like a couple paragraphs. For something this complex, that's opened up a whole host of problems that really those of us on the working group sort of became acquainted with during the, the, the months we spent studying this law. I don't know how long the legislators studied the law or studied class size reduction efforts when they reviewed the law and voted for it. But we have seen a myriad of problems and some of which we outline in the next couple of slides. One, the timeline, the schedule. Five years, as Al mentioned already, when you have a, a construction authority that's already takes four to five years to build one new school and you're asking them to increase their rate of completing new schools by about thirty to forty percent annually. That's a big that's a big unknown as to whether they can come through on that. Hiring the number of teachers that will be needed. It's well known that there's a huge national and citywide teaching shortage. The current estimate is that nine thousand new teachers will need to be hired. We have about seventy seven thousand teachers currently and about four thousand retire every year. So there's going to be, need to be really unprecedented level of new teacher hiring over the next five years to meet this. This is a really good point on on the scope of the law. As I mentioned before, the research shows even a, even if a supporter of the law has to conclude that the research from the Tennessee study only supports class size reduction at the very youngest grades, kindergarten through grades one, two, maybe grade three. This law calls for lower, reducing class sizes all the way through high school, everything. It also calls for reducing class size only down to the level of twenty to twenty five kids when the research only shows you get real benefits when you get down to about fifteen kids. And that Al already mentioned, we, you know, the, the city stands to lose dollars if they can't implement it within this very ambitious five year timeframe. Next slide, please. There's some very important unintended consequences here. Um, one of the most material that was really, um, sort of impactful, I think, is. How the law disproportionately benefits wealthier and higher performing school districts. And this is a little bit where, um, you know, some of us on the working group. Are in a position where we come from some of these districts. But we recognize when you put yourself in the C E C seat, and especially when you serve on a citywide group like we are. You really have to think about the, the benefit for the entire city. And I have very, very serious concerns that this is a, not the best way to spend city education dollars. Um, on, um, when, when you talk about where the benefits are going to go. For example, the Department of Education has shown us that forty percent of the non-compliant classes are in the top twenty five percent of the wealthiest classes citywide. Meaning, most of the schools with overcrowded classes tend to be higher income. Um, and it's the same exact stat almost for performance, just like Al showed before. Most of the overcrowded classes are in schools with higher performing, um, marks on the state tests. So if you're someone who cares about the best use of education dollars across the city, when we're focused on trying to improve learning outcomes where that's needed most. You should be seriously concerned with this law. And the State Education Commissioner Betty Rosa has said exactly the same thing. Matt Chingos on the working group, who works at the Urban Institute, published an essay. Calling this out and saying it's extremely problematic, the impact that this law is going to have on equity in the city. Couple other points I just want to make. Increased travel times. Um, I'll show this on a map in a second, but in crowded districts where you can't build the schools and there's no other solution. This, the, the working group recommended capping enrollment at very crowded schools. That means not as many families can go to the school they want to go to. That means you're going further away. Period. It's that simple. And I'm going to show you a map. Uh, maybe it's a good time to do this. Um, I'll finish this slide and then I'll show you a map of District twenty five, which I think illustrates the point. This, the, the final point on this slide is just that there'll be fewer seats in popular and sort of specialized programs. Um, if you have schools that are already crowded and you've got a lower, the general education class sizes. You're going to naturally squeeze out specialized programs, um, like gifted and talented bilingual education, E P classes. Um, anything that, um, that, that, that might require. Um, or that, that might currently be in place with a smaller number of students. Um, you know, the, the priority will be getting, um, the general education classes, um, to meet the requirements of the law. And these other elective programs that schools typically will, will bring on, will be reduced. Um, if the map is on the next slide or maybe go to the end of the presentation, can you go all the way to the end of the presentation? There's a slide I made of District twenty five.
There you go.
And this, this shows the point. So this, these are the District twenty five schools. And what I did was I highlighted by color the proportion of classes in each school, which are over the cap. And I broke it down into four groups, um, simply looking at anyone who's, in which seventy five to a hundred percent. Of the classes are over the cap, those are in red. Anyone, any school that's fifty to seventy four percent of classes over the cap, those are in yellow. Twenty five percent to forty nine percent over the cap, those are in blue. And then green is between zero to twenty four percent of classes over the cap. As you saw on the slide with all the school district citywide, District twenty five is one of the most crowded. I'm sure you all know this. And this map really lays out. Sort of the reality for parents and families. Um, if parents have to then move their, their children to a school further away with more capacity. You know, look at the north section of your district, Whitestone. Look at the north, the northeast section, the, the central section. I mean, these schools are all already. Um. Well, over the cap. Um, and so some proportion of these students, um, if, if, if you can't build schools in these areas. Um, you're gonna have to cap enrollment, which is what the working group is recommending. And look at the travel distances associated with this. I mean, where would, where would kids go from these schools? You can't just go to the next school in Whitestone because that's also overcrowded. Um, you can't go to the next school in Broadway Flushing. Um, and then, of course, in downtown Flushing, there's a, a whole host of schools that are overcrowded. Um, College Point, for example, three schools all over, all well overcrowded. So if you think about the trap, the new travel times that might be associated with this law. Um, it really begs the question of whether this is worth it or not. Um, would you rather send your kid to a local school where you have thirty kids in the class, but it's five minutes away? Or a thirty minute drive, um, where you can get a class with twenty five kids? You know, that's the decision that parents have to think about. Um, I think we're back to the last slide, if we can go to the recommendation slide. I don't know, Al, do you want to close with the recs or?
Yeah, I can close with it. So I make it very simple. Um. We want to be clear that we all support small class sizes. And based on our analysis, the only way to make it work is to de-scope it. And to, uh, approach class size deduction in phases. The problem with the law is that, you know, five years to do everything, right? K to twelve, all five. You know, all grades in just five years. This is ridiculous for anyone to think that it's even possible. Really, the best way to do it is doing phases, and we laid out here phase one, just applies, uh, class size caps to grades, uh, K to two, K to three. And just focus on those schools that are low income and not doing very well on the state exams. Once that is done, then you can expand to other K to, K to three schools, get them all, uh, within the class size caps. So you finish one phase and you have lessons learned that you can apply to the successive phases. That's really the smart way to do things instead of doing everything at the same time. Such as building a house, right? You don't build the basement, the first floor, the second floor, third floor, all at the same time. It is stupid. You have to do it step by step, very methodically, very logically, and that's what we're proposing here. So, um, we want to work with our all stakeholders.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I like your recommendations, but with, you know, with your faces, right? I, it's not going to be done in five years. Do you, how do you, do you estimate how long this will take? Ten years, fifteen years? Do you think that the five-year period will get extended? You know, is that a possibility?
So we, we do not have the information to, um. You know, let you know what timeframe is, you know, unlike the authors of the law, who just indiscriminately chose five years. Which is, you know, just pulled the number out of the air. So we're not going to go down that road. The best thing to do is to get a, a valid estimate for how long it takes to complete phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. Unfortunately, the authors of the law failed to do that research, failed to consult with anyone with any expertise and just pulled the number out of the air, five years. We're not going to do that here. We're just going to lay out a, a plan for this to succeed. And it's up to the D O E and other stakeholders to come up with a number. So that's.
Can I, can I jump on that point, Al?
Yes, please.
And to the speaker and to everyone in the audience, I want to emphasize something here too. Do not buy the argument that says this is law, it's done, it's in stone, it can't be changed. It can be changed. Laws are changed all the time. My, one of the state assembly members in my district, Lester Chang, has proposed extending the law by five years. Delaying the law, implementation of law by five years. Things can absolutely be done to make this law more workable. Um, and so I would encourage anyone here, if you want something to take to your legislators, to take to your elected officials. Um, that can absolutely be requested is to delay implementation of the law. Um, and in so doing, um, you, um, you do it more effectively.
Exactly. This class size law was not disclosed to Moses on Mount Sinai, so it, by definition, it's flawed. So we're here to provide recommendations to improve it. And what we want to do is, we want to work with stakeholders. We want to work with the U F T. We want to work with elected officials to make this succeed. The way it's written now, it's set up for failure, plain and simple.
Good. I have, I'm definite, I just wanted to say something quickly. I'm definitely in support of the smaller class sizes and I see how, where the challenge is, is that you have. A lot of kids in these buildings, where do they go?
Uh, can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Catherine Santora and I'm C E C twenty five. Um, and so we saw there was a need for the three K centers and for the pre-Ks. Throughout the city, um, many of those were housed in C B Os. They are not all in the public school building. Is there a way to reduce class sizes by utilizing empty spaces? In some of these other C B O locations, community-based organizations. Like the more of the private daycare schools or even the Catholic schools that are using, you know, they have a, a reduced enrollment. Is that something that could be explored in order to bring the numbers down in some of? The schools where our kids are?
The answer is absolutely, uh, but that's just a drop on a bucket. There's just so many overcrowded schools, that's not going to move the needle too much. Uh, so Wendy, you want, uh, Steve, are we done with the presentation? If so, okay, so we'll turn it, the floor back to Wendy.
So now we'll take, uh, we'll take questions from the public. And see if the C E C members have any questions. We have Shirley Lee, um, Alvin Hong, Bob Wazoric, Catherine Santora. We have Eden Rubenstein on Zoom, uh, Joseph Chows on Zoom and Frank Chows on Zoom. Um, if. If you have questions.
Carla, are you managing the chat or?
Me and Portana.
For Hannah yet.
Uh, I believe Effie, uh, did answer some of the questions, but I can't repeat those questions if you guys want.
Right, those questions.
Uh, will the class size reduction law also affect gifted and talented program class sizes? Because of now the cap is thirty two in elementary school. I believe you answered the question. Would you mind repeating the answer again?
Yes, I can take that one. That's okay. Um, the, the answer is yes, it will affect. Um, um, every class except for, um, standalone special education classes were exempted. Um, but for gifted, something like gifted and talented, it absolutely will. Um, and as I mentioned in the comments, you'll, not only will, will you have a smaller number of students in the class. So for example, kindergarten through third grade classes are supposed to go to twenty kids per class. So if you previously had a class of, I don't know, thirty kids. Um, you're now, you know, you, you, you lose ten kids from the class. Where do those ten kids go? Well, if you have enough space in your school to start a second G and T class, that's great. Chances are you're not going to, because the entire, all the other classes in the school are also shrinking. And so you can see what's happening here is, um, in an, in an already space constrained school. You lower the number of students per class and, um, and, and you're naturally going to, you, you, you won't be able to offer as many seats. And some of the specialized programs like gifted and talented, like bilingual education, for example. And by the way. Go ahead.
I, I just want to piggyback on what you're saying because another, um, not only do specialized programs honors A P gifted and talented. Classes, which are some of the most overcrowded and in-demand classes and classrooms that we have. Going to shrink and we don't have enough seats for them to begin with. Those, those will definitely lose students, but we are concerned, uh, one of the unintended consequences, despite the fact that. Our, the working group may say, well, we recommend not using spaces like science labs and, uh, dance studios and art rooms. Um, we have a big concern that when we talk about utilizing space, that those rooms are going to get compromised. It has been discussed to say, well, if a dance studio isn't being used in period three, let's make that a classroom. Um, I think there's a, a great danger to the current composition of schools and, and what. Electives are offered if you, if you like having a computer class or a research class. These are classes that are going to have to fall by the wayside because there are no spaces for them to be held and no teachers for them to be taught. So it's not only advanced classes, although that is a deep concern, but it is current classes, um, that, that we're very worried about. Um, because even, even if it's recommended and understand that the working groups report are purely recommendations, the D O E does not have to follow them. Um, they are, they are just recommendations. And they can't follow them because they're going, if they need to comply with the law, they're going to have to utilize every possible empty space. We saw what happened during COVID when every possible space had to be used to have smaller class sizes. The same sort of scenario is going to have to play out.
Um, I think the next question.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Uh, can I add something also? Whatever you can hear me. Um, hi, this is Elisa O'Shea. I was the Queens rep for C H S. For a couple of years and prior to that, I was on C E C D twenty seven. Um, I just want to add, I have a childhood in I E P. And what a lot of people don't realize is that this will also create a scenario where we will lose two to four I E P seats in I C T classes across the board. Depending on the grade level. So you will end up with a scenario where students who have the right to. Uh, you know, a specific classroom setting, uh, accommodations in the building will most likely be displaced. There will be a percentage of students with I E Ps who will be displaced because we will be losing those seats also. And the working group did make a tremendous amount of effort to retain the programming for those students as a priority in their recommendations. But the reality is there's only so many I C T classes and as a parent of a student with an I E P who traveled for many years on buses. Got up extremely early in the morning to go across, uh, Queens into Long Island at times. Um, I can tell you that parents with students with I E Ps do not want more travel time on buses. And with the busing issues right now for special education, the, uh, difficulty hiring drivers. It's going to be a nightmare for those parents specifically. I just want to add that because a lot of people do not realize we are also losing those seats. In every grade level and every I C T class because of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Actually, she brought up a great point with the displacement. It does the working class, uh, group foresee that we, you know, rezoning the districts. You know, maybe a step that the O E would take. We want to take up this, a question. Okay. Okay, Steve.
Yeah, are you, um, yeah, I mean, absolutely. That was, um, a, a very big, um, topic of conversation during the months of the working group and it is. Um, it is an option. I don't need to tell anyone in this room that rezonings are. Um, oftentimes very contentious and very controversial and effectively it's the same. It, it has some of, somewhat of the same impact as capping enrollment. Um, because you're suddenly saying, okay, all these families who moved into this district. Sorry, you're, you're no longer, um, eligible to attend this school. Um, the other problem I have with using rezoning as a tool to implement this law is. Um, think about the frequency with which you'll need to do rezonings. Every time, um, a particular school maybe, um, loses or gains students. Um, gains students to go out of compliance, let's say that happens, you, you're doing another rezoning. Um, it's an extremely, um, it's, it sounds nice on paper. People like to say, oh, we'll just rezone it. We'll draw a line. We know the data. It's not how it works. We all know families move, families choose where they want to go, families choose where they want to live. Um, rezoning to meet this law, um, is, is not an appropriate option, um, in our opinion.
All right. So let me add to that. Um, you know, the working group. They're treating schools as fungible commodities, right? And they're thinking that, all right, this school is overcrowded, so therefore we'll ship families to another school that is not overcrowded. That's an issue because families move into a neighborhood, they purchase homes and rent houses because they want specifically to attend that school that is nearby, that. That zone. that zone that is zone for their uh, their residents. They don't want to travel to another place, another school. There's a reason why schools are desired by parents. Right? There's differentiation between the different schools. Schools are not commodities. Yet, uh, you know, members of the working group advocates are treating it like commodities. That's absolutely not true. So we need to uh, preserve parent choice. And this, the way this law is going to be implemented is going to eliminate parent choice. And really, the only solution is to build capacity at the schools in which parents want their kids to attend. Unfortunately, it's not going to take five years. It's going to take much longer than that. All right, Wendy?
Um, Eden has a question. Eden?
Thanks, Wendy. Hi, it's Eden Rubenstein from C E C twenty five. Um, can you further explain what rezoning is going to do to the families?
Well, um, I just answered that. I said, well, if you're rezoned right out of the, the school that you nearby, you know, it's possible that your home is located a few blocks away, but you're unable to send your kids there. And instead, you're zoned to a, you know, a school that's much further away. And that's not what parents want to do. They want their kids to attend a school that is close to the home.
And just to piggyback on that, Al, um, a word that I, I hear used a lot, um, of, it was used a lot in the, in the working group was redistribution of children. Um, the idea was to sort of utilize the class size law to, to take the students in the overcrowded schools and, and shift them to the underutilized schools for a various, for various reasons. Um, and if you looked at them, at the map that Steve had, that would certainly mean great, great distances in districts where it's not so simple to just rezone a child to a school a block away. Um, I, I think a lot of folks in Manhattan are tend to be used to having schools sort of a couple of blocks from one another and we all in Queens, we know that, that our geography doesn't work that way, that our districts are huge in Brooklyn as well, um, and Staten Island. Um, that you can have a school miles away and very often due to the, the various um, neighborhoods, you can have a school that is underutilized three or five miles away from a school that is overutilized. But that's the proposal to redistribute the children to the underutilized schools.
Right, so if you take Staten Island as an example, what are you gonna, how are you gonna redistribute the Staten Island? Right? Where are you gonna send your kids? To, uh, I don't know, New Jersey? Where? It doesn't make any sense. Wendy?
Okay, um, Joseph Chow. He has a question. Joseph?
Good evening. Uh, thank you for hosting the meeting. I'd like to thank Steve and Al for putting the numbers together. I also like um, to thank Effie to point out the numbers. I have a few issues. Uh, number one, if, well, if they believe small class, smaller class size works in two to three years, the data doesn't improve. Are they willing to go back to thirty four? Now, um, I suspect what they're gonna do is they're gonna, they're gonna lower the expectation and standards. Right now, if a high student gets thirty percent right, algebra, geometry, trig regions, they get a sixty five. But to get a score of ninety on the algebra, geometry, trig regions, you would have to get ninety percent right. I suspect they're going to lower that to maybe twenty five or even twenty to show the smaller class size work. Um, uh, my question basically is will they go back to thirty four? Now, to go back to what Al was saying, the high, the more overcrowded schools are more mostly high performing. Parents and kids vote with their feet. They see the good programs, they go there. All right. I also have a major issue with rezoning. Parents rent or they buy a house in Bayside, in Fresh Meadows, in certain part of Flushing. Because these uh, uh, neighborhoods are zoned to either Cordoza or Francis Lewis High School, that's where they want to go. They pay higher rents, they pay more to buy the house and they pay more taxes. Rezoning does not work. The only way for this to work is for them to bus kids from District twenty six to twenty eight. That's the only way it might work. There are some schools, high schools in, um, I'm not even talking elementary, middle, high schools. There might be some room in, um, Springfield area. All right, um, in addition, I wrote on the sheet, um, somebody mentioned already about the G N T. Now, if a school takes in, um, there we go, one thousand two hundred students uh, of class of thirty four, that's thirty classes. They do class of twenty five, thirty classes will give us seven hundred fifty students. Two hundred seventy students will be displaced. In other words, twenty six point four percent of students will have to go someplace else. Now, the, if a student attends one of the high performing schools, then let's say they graduate ninety percent of students. I don't know if these two hundred seventy kids will go to another school or end up graduating. Uh, I'm gonna also say something politically incorrect. Uh, it might be their goal to shift some of the students to the other schools to bail out the low performing schools. But it is not fair to the parents. It is not fair to the children. Right? Uh, we're living in a democracy. Parents should have the right to vote where their kids want to go to school. Um, that's basically my comments. Thank you.
I want to add something. This is Effie. Just want to add something, um, quickly. Um, so first of all, the D O E, the way they look at um, travel is by distance, air distance. So even if like, um, you know, like you have a school that is across the track from the railroad and you need to like drive one mile, one work, one direction to get to the tunnel to go under the railroad and then another mile back, they'll say like, hey, there's a school just a hundred feet away from, from where you live. Even though it will take you like, you know, at least two miles to get there. Um, and what does that mean? It means like if you live in North Queens, by the way, they might say, hey, guess what? Not that far away in the South Bronx, there's a school with a lot of empty seats. Why don't you go there? They, they don't even take into account that you have to go over bridges and things like that. They only calculate air distance. Uh, in Queens, by the way, the only district that is not overcrowded is District twenty nine. That's the Springfield and Saint Albans uh, neighborhoods.
Thank you, Effie. I just want to let everyone know um, on Zoom that um, uh, everyone other than the panelists and C E C members that's on Zoom will have to submit their questions in the Q and A chat box. Uh, we will, although you, your hands may be raised, uh, we will not be calling on you. So Bob, you have a question?
Uh, yes, uh, thanks, Wendy. Um, hi, I'm Bob Wazorick from C E C forty five. Um, my question was, uh, just looking at my notes here, I'm talking about the budget, existing budget, thirty seven billion dollars. I believe that's the operating budget. I think the capital budget's on top of that. Um, and then they're talking about this cost somewhere between one point three and two point two billion. Or, or my notes are accurate from the, from the slides. I guess my, my question is, where is that money expected to come from? If the funds from the state are already incorporated into the budget, what's the expectation there?
All right, so let me answer the question. Um, we have politicians, elected officials saying that, oh, the state is providing uh, one point whatever, three billion per year. Um, because of additional foundation aid. And that money can be used for class size reduction. That is an inaccurate and false statement. The one point three billion that the state has promised, has agreed to provide now is actually money or funding that the state never did provide New York, uh, New York City, that it had owed New York City. So now that the state has agreed to provide this money, one point three billion, what does it pay for? It pays for fair student funding that was never fully funded. Now that that money is coming in, all schools will get their fair share of fair student funding. And in addition to that, there's also uh, two hundred million surplus, uh, I mean, um, an add up to uh, contracts for excellence. So the six hundred million going to fund fair student funding for the first time ever. So that's a false statement saying that, oh, there's money from the state, you can use this for class size reduction. Complete lie. So six hundred million, there's another two hundred million that's going to contracts for excellence. So that's eight hundred million. Now, that leaves uh, one point three minus eight million, what's left? Five hundred million. Well, guess what? The U F T uh, just got a new contract. And according to our calculations, that adds a cost of about a half a billion dollars to the D O E. So there it is, the one point three billion disappeared. There is no funding from the state. That's a complete lie that you're hearing from politicians. So to answer, exactly. So to answer your question, right? Before I answer your question, first be aware that Mayor Adams has uh, announced that there will be a five hundred forty seven million cut to D O E budget because of the migrant crisis. So programs are going to be cut for sure. On the top of that, federal stimulus will expire September twenty twenty four. That's about a billion dollars. So uh, if you have access to slides, what does that billion dollar pay, what does it pay for? It pays for three K, it pays for summarizing, it pays for school uh, social workers, psychologists, a whole host of uh, services that we're getting right now. All of that is going to disappear. So what, what does the chancellor have to do? He has to balance these competing programs. What do you do? Do you keep summarizing? Do you keep three K? Do you keep funding uh, pre K? Do you keep your uh, scho- school social workers? What are you going to cut? They have to cut something because the federal stimulus is disappearing. And on top of that, Mayor Adams is uh, cutting D O E budget by five hundred forty seven million. And on top of that, we have this class size mandate in which we have, in which the D O E has to find one point nine billion, more or less, to pay for class size deduction. What programs are going to be cut? Right? What services are going to be cut to pay for class size reduction? What harm is going to be caused by this? So these are very difficult questions to answer. And we don't have the answers. I don't think anyone has the answers and I don't think, I don't, you know, we don't envy anyone who has to make these decisions. But given the facts of the fiscal realities, it's pretty clear that class size reduction uh, is not affordable. There's no budget allocated for it. How can you do it?
Steve, I, I know you.
Quick, piggyback. Um, I was told during the working group deliberations, it's not our responsibility to consider the cost of implementing the class size law. This is on the Budget and Finance um, Subcommittee of the Working Group. Um, mind you, I made multiple attempts to bring up, raise the issue. It would have been a great opportunity to address, make some of these sort of tough deliberations that Al is referring to. Um, where you could actually talk about, well, what's, what do we want to spend our, our, you know, limited budget resources on? Um, but I was told by members of the, of the U F T and advocates for the class size law that that is not our, that is out of our jurisdiction as members of the working groups. I just want to add that point.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Shirley, uh, Shirley has a question. She's a member on C E C twenty five.
Hi, my name is Shirley Sonny Lee. Well, my original uh, question was actually if, um, this, uh, this, if the law is on the mandate, then how will D O E pay for the class size reduction? Do we gonna have a, a budget cut on our, uh, on our programs that's ongoing was my original question, but it's just like, I already answered. So my other question is actually, um, can you please uh, explain briefly why capping school enrollment is, is not a good idea for students and parents?
All right, so let's let the uh, house, uh, sorry, the panelists on Zoom answer that. I think uh, many of them have answers or even the ones that are here in person. Why capping enrollment at schools is harmful to families?
Effie raised his hand. Um, so he, but I'm happy to answer, but Effie has his hand raised.
I, I, I actually wanted to uh, chime in on like the previous question, just to clarify something that actually Deb put uh, part of the, in the chat. Um, the one point nine that we roughly estimate, we said between one point three and two point two, we said maybe one point nine. Um, that is not a one-time cost. This is a recurring annual cost. So from now to the end of times, probably even more, it's probably gonna get out, like, it's not gonna be even probably one point nine. Probably three, four years from now will be two, then two point one, two point two. This is a cost that's, that's gonna be recurring annually and increasing over time. In addition, this is not the end of the story. This is just for teacher salaries, basically for staffing. Um, we need to build probably hundreds of extra schools to comply with it. That is not the D O E, but that is what is called the S C A. That's the School Construction Authority. They would need probably tens of billions of dollars to build potentially hundreds of extra school buildings. Uh, we got different estimates. Initially, we got between thirty and thirty five billion. Um, then we got that it might be just in the twenties, so it's not very clear. But I would say that the construction will be in the tens of billions. So it's not just the one point nine, it's an additional cost for construction. So we're talking really altogether tens of billions of dollars to implement this law and um, someone else can answer the question on enrollment, otherwise I can, but I, I want other people to, to, to speak. Thank you.
Tonight, may I try?
Okay, Joseph.
Uh, yes, um, I wanted to add something. My name's Joseph Chow. I'm C E C twenty five. I worked for the D O E for thirty four years. The last twenty, twenty four years of my career, I served as a math A P Francis Lewis High School. So I know a thing about, a thing or two about math education. Now to answer the cap um, class, uh, class cap school. The issue is, let's say, um, there's a thousand kids in the Francis Lewis zone. Right? You've capped it at one thousand each year. You have now filled all the special programs in Francis Lewis High School. Number two, as time goes on, more homes are being built, usually multifamily, there'll be more kids. So like I said before, if parents paid more to buy a house or to rent in that zone, they wouldn't want to go to another school. That's why capping school is never a great idea. Um, I don't know if I answered your question, Shirley.
Um, I think Deb was going to provide some more comment and I can also, but Deb, please go ahead.
So, so um, a lot of what we look at is by grade band. So you, you can think about it from an elementary perspective, a middle school and a high school perspective. Um, starting with elementary school, all from the pre K, three K, all the way through fifth grade. Um, you know that, that most of our Queens, if not all of our Queens um, schools and, and most, I think in Brooklyn are zoned. Um, it, anyone who serves on a C E C and done a zoning has, or a rezoning, or if a new school comes, knows that um, as they build a school um, or before the need for a school arises, you have more students that, that are in the zone that can fit in the school. And so that schools already have the ability to cap their school. So that's called capping. And then the excess students are sent by the D O E to other schools. Wherever they may be in the district, they attempt to, to place the students in the district. And right now, at least in District thirty, um, the years that I've been, it's two students, five students, ten students. Um, and then in Long Island City, we had um, such a need for a school that we had a hundred uh, students on a waiting list to get into their zone school. And they were going to be sent while a school was being built. And this is when they had a site for a school already, it just was taking the four to five years to build. They were going to be sent um, bused um, to Woodside temporarily and the community was up in arms because we're talking about four-year-olds, five-year-olds, six-year-olds um, being bused far away um, from their, from their zone school, even temporarily. This wouldn't be temporary, this would be permanent because I don't see these neighborhoods shrinking so much. Uh, they are crowded neighborhoods, they need schools, they need seats. We have been in need of seats forever. This is just going to exacerbate the need for seats. And then you look at middle school, we have some zones, some not, but you really see this in high school where in Queens in particular, we are already at a dearth of seats. We need tens of thousands of seats in Queens. Um, so our Queens kids are being, are, are finding their high school seats outside of Queens, but all of those schools, and that isn't just specialized high schools, it's all of the high schools are going to now be reduced by perhaps twenty percent of their seats. So where these kids are going to go, I don't know. I, I don't, it's, it's a mystery where they go now. It's amazing that, that our Queen students are finding seats elsewhere. But capping those, those uh, buildings means the D O E can send your child somewhere else. And the working group members say, well, we're gonna put a guardrail on that. We'll say, oh, you know, we recommend that students are only sent within a mile of their current zone. That's not something that the working group can actually ask or say. If you look at the, again, at the map that Steve uh, showed, that's just not possible. So we hear a lot of platitudes and a lot of um, things that sound great coming out of the working group and proponents of the law. And there, it's, it's magical thinking. It's And there, it's, it's magical thinking. It's not the reality, at least in the areas that we are talking about right now.
So let me give an example of why this guard, so-called guardrails, uh, are not feasible. Uh, saying that, hey, uh, let's, let's place a limit on the travel time or distance to one mile. Let's, let's take District Thirty-One Staten Island, right? Every single school in Staten Island is, uh, overcrowded, overutilized. If, and, and the only solution is to cap the schools within, you know, to make, to ensure that appliance within five, uh, five years. So if every single school is capped, where are those kids going to attend school? Right? They're, are they expected to take the ferry across Manhattan, right? And then take the subway all the way up to Upper Manhattan? That's the idea of these crazy members of the class size working group. So this is why we have to really put a stop to this. Yes, please.
So I, I feel like I have some better grasp of high schools, right? And, um, I just want to say that when the D O E presented to us about staffing, there's three areas of shortage. It's special education, L, and STEM teachers for either C T or higher level math and science. Now, when you start capping enrollment and you're shrinking the classes, the principals will have to allocate their teachers differently to cover the basic courses. So when you get to the high school level, you know, the idea is to allow students to pick tracks, especially if they want to go into a certain, uh, union track or through a C T or into some kind of college track. And they need upper level classes to be able to succeed in college. And when I was on C C H S, we looked at a lot of data because there was a report that was released last year by the state. And a lot of students in our New York City high schools are not able to succeed in college or in apprenticeship programs because they were not adequately prepared, especially in the math and science areas. So as you're spreading these teachers out to cover smaller classes and more of them, you're losing these upper electives. And you're also having, at the same time, difficulty attracting STEM teachers, attracting special education teachers. And it just kind of compounds the problem. Now, some on the class size working group felt we could stagger arrival times and create different schedules for overcrowded high schools. But us parents know that we're already on staggered schedules at these big schools. There are already two or three shifts of students coming and going out of the building. Go by John Bound one afternoon and see what the dismissals are like there. Go by Francis Lewis one day and see Forest Hills High School and see what the dismissals are like, what the arrivals are like. We are already staggering those. And we are already creating alternate schedules. And the issue is, how are we going to be able to prepare our students to go out in the workforce, to go out to, to get a college degree and get a good job? If we're not preparing them and we're not competitive, because yes, we have smaller classes and there's a likelihood that some students may benefit. But a lot of students will also lose out. They'll lose out on that opportunity to, to learn calculus, to learn physics, to learn something that could land them in a tech job. And that's where we desperately need teachers also. So I don't know if that helps to explain why capping enrollment and shrinking classes in the high schools especially could be a big issue for college readiness and career readiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Um, Eden, I know you have another question.
Yes, sorry. Um, there was mention of the numbers affecting like I C T and I E P students in like special ed classes, things like that. If those children still have mandated needs, how is that going to take them away from that? Because they're going to be the ones that require that class setting. So I just want to get a better understanding of that because obviously then less, in my just opinion from that, that would mean there's less gen ed kids would go into that class because there'd be more I C T classes. Maybe I'm wrong. So that's why I just want some clarification.
So, so if we open up more sections of I C T classes, where do we find those teachers? I was on the Staffing and Hiring Subcommittee of the Class Size Working Group because I think that's the heart of the matter, right? Where are we going to find qualified teachers within four years? Because remember, compliance is in five. So we would need to be creating pathways right now to attract teachers into the special education field to have them in place by the time this law has to be fully completed at the school level. So yeah, it would be great if we have more special education teachers and we have more classroom space. And unfortunately, I C T is based on the class number, right? The composition has to be, right now, it's most likely ten or twelve, depending perhaps eight, depending on the size of the classroom that they're in. But when you start displacing two to four students in each class, and then you have to make new I C T sections, you need new special education teachers to fill all those slots. And it's not as easy as you think to attract and hire special education teachers. One of the things we worked really hard on in our committee was to try to figure out how to incentivize people to enter the field of teaching and how to take people who maybe have work experience or other areas of expertise and get them into teaching. And, and that costs money too. Don't be, don't be fooled that there's a bunch of teachers in the waiting out there who are going to jump on these jobs because it's not the reality. We, we don't have the back end built out yet to fill all those teaching positions, especially again in L, STEM and special education. At special education, as we know, after the pandemic, a lot of students did not receive their services. A lot of students did not even get the catch-up services they were promised. So you've also got this group of students moving through the system who may have missed some of their education in the last couple of years because there wasn't enough of an effort to meet those mandates. And going forward, we're going to have a problem hiring the teachers to continue to teach them. I just want to stress that, that this is also a hiring and staffing issue too. Thank you.
And just to add to, to, um, what you were saying, Eden, if you were to, if you were to, um, add just the special ed students to an I C T setting, you're losing actually, what Alyssa said, is the ratio that is required by their, um, by their I E P. Uh, if, if you displaced the gen ed students in favor of the, um, kids with I E Ps, that really is denying those kids the opportunity to be in a more integrated setting. So I, I feel like that would be problematic as well.
Let me also give a quick, solid, like, example. So in a high school, if, let's say you have thirty students, there's a right now kind of a rule that you have sixty percent gen ed and forty percent I C T students. In a class of thirty, that means you have eighteen students who are gen ed and twelve, uh, the, who have an I C T on their I P. Once you reduce that class to twenty-five, now the ratio has to be, uh, fifteen and ten. So you went from twelve students with I Ps to, to ten. What do you do with these two extra students? Practically speaking, it is very hard for a principal. He needs an extra, she needs an extra classroom and an extra two teachers because every I C T class has at least two teachers. You need an extra classroom and an extra teacher, two teachers. Most principals, I hate to say this, it's probably not a popular, like, thing to say, there, there will be some pressure to say, you know what? Out of these twelve students, can we like maybe declassify some of them? Yeah, they'll go to the parent, you know, your student is doing pretty well. Like, she doesn't need the I C T class anymore. Or if there's like, if you can convince two parents to change their I P for their students, it's going to be like, well, we don't have place or teachers right now in this school. You would need to maybe travel three miles down that way because that's the next place, that's the next school that has an available I C T spot. So it either requires declassification or traveling far away. It is very unlikely that a school will be able to open another classroom and hire more teachers. That, that's the reality. I mean, ideally, yes, but in reality, very, very unlikely.
Thank you. Um, we will start taking questions from the chat. It's eight twenty now and we have ten minutes, so we will start with a question from the chat and then we will, then we'll take an in-person, uh, question. For Hannah?
Yes, um, I think there's a question regarding are we able to oppose this law or is this a final law that was passed? We don't understand what the status. And who can we, which official can we write to?
Well, as we said before, any law can be changed and amended. And if you agree with us with the presentation and you've agreed that the points we made are correct and that the law needs to be amended, the best thing to do is to contact your state uh, representative, right? Your senator, state senator, and your assembly member and get them to know that you're concerned about it and that you think that the law should be amended.
Okay. So next we have someone here in, in, in the audience that has a question, uh, Tina Collins.
Hi. Hi.
Do you want to come up or you want to speak from your, it's up to you. It's up to you.
Logistics.
So that, if you.
Yes, we can hear.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, uh, thank you. This can see twenty five holding this, this meeting. Um, as other members of the working group know, um, I was a member of the working group. I'm, um, the Director of Education Policy for, uh, the United Federation of Teachers and, um, I was glad to have the opportunity to meet with a wide range of people who are represented on this, this working group. I'll be works that through April, since, since past April, I think, um, very collaboratively to, to deal with some current issues. And I think we know that this is an issue that, um, and, and the implementation of this law is, is one that is both incredibly important to so many of the parents on that working group and so many of the parents that we heard when we had the public meetings. And one, um, that created a, a lot of discussions. And I think I, I and other members really came together in good faith to try to talk through those issues. And, and we knew, as with any group that, that large, that we weren't all going to agree on every issue. But I, I could say certainly for myself and, and for the subcommittees that I was on, we really did try to hear all voices. We weren't going to be able to come to consensus because I think some of these issues are ones where there's not consensus. But I think we tried to be respectful and thoughtful. And I think the recommendations that came through, as I'm seeing and hearing some of the, the presentation today, um, some of it is echoed about, as folks have mentioned, the importance of, um, ensuring that our students with I E Ps, uh, get their mandated services, making sure that there is a community voice in decisions about enrollment, um, and zoning and things like that. All of those things, and if, if folks were able to make it to any of the, the public hearings on the recommendations are actually in, uh, the report as it's currently drafted now. And so I do think that it, I mean, it's, it's been sort of sad to me to see this reported here, some of the language used to describe, um, the behavior of the working group because I do think that, um, that there was a lot of effort made to, to hear concerns and to put language and recommendations in there. Um, for example, on, on the staffing committee, there was a recognition that this push to hire more teachers was going to require a long-term plan to build it on ramp, especially in these first couple of years when we're potentially in compliance. Work with T U D, work with the state, seek federal funding to get teachers, especially in these high need areas like special education, like our bilingual teachers. That's something we at the union, and I personally at the union have been very involved with for a number of years. Um, and that's a recommendation in the report, these, the budgetary issues. There are some very specific recommendations. Again, I encourage people to look at what's been posted online about sources of funding, state, federal, city that could be used to address, uh, the funding needs of implementation. Um, the implication that, uh, the state intended this as an un-undemandate. The campaign for fiscal equity began decades ago, in part because New York City had higher class sizes than so many other districts in the, in the state, to the, the point where the state Supreme Court found that it was not, that we were not in compliance with the, the, the kind of education that our children here in New York City have the right to. And so when the C F B law was passed, class size was one of the mandatory areas in which foundation need needed to be spent. There are other areas, they call it class size, has always been a priority in part because of that data over years that New York City, um, and the others districts covered under C F B had disproportionately high class sizes. And so when C F B became fully funded, foundation, they became fully funded. It wasn't a coincidence that it happened at the same time as this class size law was passed because the idea was that were, was, if the class size law was, was not in place at the state level, that class size would not be a priority because it has not been a priority here. Oh, sorry. Yes, I'll, I'll wrap on. And so again, I just want to, um, work, invite everyone to continue informing ourselves about this. We all care about the kids. We all think class size, as, as we heard, is good for our kids. And I don't want the idea that it's impossible to implement where that the state should be told that, that we don't, that we shouldn't have to implement it because it's impossible to, to move us further away from getting it done for the, the kids in this city because they, they deserve it. The kids in these overcrowded classes here in Queens, they deserve to be seen as individuals.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, let's move on to the next speaker.
Thank you, Tina. Um, we really have to move because due to interest of time.
Um, could you mind if I just say one quick thing? Because I agree with so much of what Tina said. And I just want to say as, as a dissenter to, to what the working group did. Um, I just want to say that our kids deserve a lot of things. And I have been, I, I was on a lawsuit about class size when my son was in kindergarten. I absolutely believe in lower class size, but I also believe in art and dance and music in my kids' schools. I believe in neighborhood schools. And I believe in a lot of things that I think are compromised. And what, what our group is saying is that we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and to, yes, examine not just the intent of the law, but what implementation, um, what the implications for implementation are, which is a deficit of the actual working group. There were almost no, there was no examination of, or if there was and when there was, it was deemed, uh, argumentative and, and counter to our charge. And I think that it, what we're saying is not that our kids don't deserve smaller class size, but that there are trade-offs that parents in particular need to understand, rather than the platitude of class size is important. No, we're not, we are not arguing that. We know it, we know what it does to teachers and what it does to students. But we also know what travel times do to students. What we also know the effect, um, on losing your neighborhood school, on the loss of electives, on loss of seats. We want to do this in a smarter way. Um, we think the law was not written in the best, smartest way. Let's rewrite that law to achieve what we all want in a better, smarter, more logical way that is not about magical thinking and platitudes, that it's about logic, money, space, things that are concrete and real. And I think if we put our heads together with the electeds, we can achieve the goal that we all want. So.
For Donna, next question?
Yeah, for Hannah, can you read the next question from the chat?
How does the migrant crisis work, uh, into this situation?
Wow, that's a loaded question.
Well, the answer to that is, um, the mayor has already addressed that by cutting five hundred forty-seven million from the D O E budget because of migrant prices. And that obviously puts pressure on the D O E to find funding to keep, you know, current programs operating. So I just want to add one thing, you know, a couple of us on the, uh, panel, you know, a couple of panels have, uh, master's degree in finance. And the, you know, the issue that the U F T is saying is that, oh, okay, there's plenty of fund, funding here and there, the city can pull it up. That's just complete B S. There's no money to, uh, get class size, uh, implemented.
That's not nice because you know what? We're always respectful at these meetings and saying our position is B S. We can agree to disagree. So so far, two things happened. We called people on the working group crazy. They're sitting in the room. Second of all, we call the position of the U F T B S. I think we can all agree to disagree in a respectful way.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. So next we have, um,
Next question.
No, Bradley Alt- Adler? Alter, I'm sorry.
All right. I'll just stay here. Um, how much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Yeah, because we already over the eight-thirty mark.
So my name is Brad Alter. I'm a parent member of the working group, um, also a special educator. And the first thing I just want to do for everybody online is to really, we put, I put personal, an incredible amount of time into the inter- we should be working with the dissenters and I, everyone else. Uh, and I really encourage people when the recommendations are released to look at them yourself because there was a real sensitivity to the issues that were brought up here. And what you'll see in terms of rezoning, in terms of usage of classes is that And what you'll see in terms of rezoning, in terms of usage of classes, is that the working group recommendations say that those final decisions have to be made at the community level because those are really important. Um, the other one I just want to raise as an educator, something I'm an expert in, um, is that when they're looking at the benefits of class size and saying, and only correlating it to test scores. And so people brought up, uh, you know, the the new economy. If you look into the literature, into what employers are developing, it's interpersonal skills. It's called soft skills. And students develop those soft skills when they have more interactions with people who can serve as social models. If you look at the work of Professor Dr. Neckler from UPenn, who looks into this, um, his studies of, it's the psychology department studying, studies how kids are affected by the relationships they have with adults and what impact that has in terms of their long-term outcomes. He draws a pretty clear correlation that the more drawn relationships that students have in their life, the better their long-term economic, financial, interpersonal outcomes are. And I'm just going to tell you, our kids, whether they're at Stuyvesant, whether my son, they are not well. They need help in this area. And I think that it's urgent. Um, I, I really do. And I think that this is a place where I I hope that the dissenters will fight with us to get this passed because this is what all our kids deserve. They all deserve to be seen. And I hope that I see you on the street fighting these budget cuts. Uh, our system's been divested from over and over. And we're the advocates, like you're the advocates. We should be fighting for these things. As a parent, I'm fighting for these things because I know that's what my son deserves and what everyone else deserves. And I know there was a one last thing I just have to get out there is that there was a lot of conversation about magical thinking and platitudes. I've only, I haven't been here the whole time, but I've heard the word probably over and over from the panelists. Probably a hundred, probably this. I'm a math teacher, like, show me the numbers. And why we said in the working group, it's not our place to do the finances is because when I signed up, it said how to operationalize this, not how to pay for it. I didn't sign up to do that. That wasn't what the charge of the group was. It was outside of the scope. It wasn't, I would, I'll speak for myself, I wasn't saying that these issues aren't real. These are sort of, this is not what we're going to have to fight for always, and we've always had to fight for kids. But the point being is that that was outside of the scope of the working group and your members were trying to bring it in. And we're saying that that is not what we came here for. I didn't get picked for this working group as a parent to figure that out. And that's all I have. I really appreciate folks' time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We we were given a presentation in the working group, all of the members, they were on a fiscal cliff. And when we tried to ask specific questions about the budgets and how it would affect the class size mandate, that's what the answer was, it's outside of the scope of this group. Yet we got a presentation that clearly showed us that there are huge financial issues facing this city. And I am sorry, it is not outside the scope. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a parent, I'm a worker in the city, and I want to know how much is this going to cost? It's going to be expensive. No one doubts that it's nicer to have smaller classes, but it's going to cost money that we may not have.
You yourself said our kids need to prepare for the future.
We do.
The research and the market say soft skills is the way there, not test scores. Test scores are important, but.
We are going to
Question, please.
We are gonna, we're going to take one more, one more chat question.
On what city services cost, so we fight for more. And that's what we were presented with. We were shown what it costs to run the city and how much the Department of Education budget is. And there's going to be a deficit, like, there's no way there's not.
I want, I want to also clarify, even if funding is not an issue, we have billions of dollars available, let's say. Um, it is very important to understand, like, from a principal's perspective, something we fail to do in the working group is to discuss trade-offs. Uh, if you're running a math department and you don't have extra classroom space and you don't have extra teachers, you're going to be like, let's say in a high school, I have to teach only the region's classes because these are the only things that are required. Any statistics class, gone. AP calculus, gone. I don't have the class space or the teachers to do anything extra. Anything elective beyond the basic, basic core.
Excuse me.
This is not the platform to, we're here to answer questions from the public. We're going to move on to the next questions in the chat. For Hana, please.
Are they grandfathering kids already in the school or or will this force kids out of the school they are already in? Also in suburban areas, you can roll up portables, uh, portable trailers. But many urban schools don't have yards to do this. Has then, has this been brought up to the government officials?
Uh, I'm going to take that one. And yes, every student, according to Chancellor's Regulation A101, has the right to remain in a school that they are currently enrolled in uh, through its terminal grade. So if your school goes to fifth grade, then you have the right to remain once you are enrolled through fifth grade. So no students um, will be removed from the school. This involves new enrollment in each section in in elementary, middle, and high school. Um, as far as um, the portables or trailers is, as we're, we call them. Um, there was a a discussion about that. Um, the the ultimate recommendation of the working group was that um, trailers are not recommended, but um, Brad and I actually worked on um, language that did say that if if um, we could temporarily use a portable because uh, an an addition was being built or a school was being built, um, that that might be one, one strategy to not have to cap the school because seats were actually being built, but they needed that couple of years just to, just to get by. So it's been discussed, but no one is particularly happy with um, with the trailers. No one really wants to see them come back. Um, many of us fought to see them go away in the first place. Um, but and as you say, not every school can can accommodate a trailer. But it's not something that we would love to see uh, come back if we can help it.
Thank you. And well, we will take the last in-person question from Michael Sill.
Hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to talk to me very briefly, I know it's late. Um, so I heard a lot of talk uh, today about caps on enrollment uh, and about teachers shortages. And as I know and and all of you know from having read the law, there are exceptions in the law for schools that are over enroll and there are exceptions to the class size mandate for uh, subject areas where there are teacher shortages. So my question is, why was that ignored in this presentation?
Uh, I'm going to quickly jump, quickly jump in because it was roundly ignored by the working group. We brought it up many times um, as an option for schools to utilize the exception, at least temporarily, because the exception is only um, in a temporary capacity. And the working group, you will not see, at least in the final draft that that we have seen so far, uh, any mention of exemptions, um, despite the fact that it is written in the law. But you are absolutely right that it is something that should be brought up. Again, a function of the law that was not fully flushed out because the process isn't wholly clear in the language, something the DOE is going to have to figure out. But absolutely, parents need to know that they should go to their SLTs and go to their principals and say, um, we would like an exemption because we don't, one of the things, we do not have staff, we do not have money, and we do not have space. And if, and that's the last I'll say.
So the law is absolutely counterpointive to scare tactics by having traveled. So, so may I answer that question, Mike? The very fact that there are exemptions in the law demonstrates that the law is flawed. If the law were written correctly, there wouldn't be a need for exemptions.
People, people need exemption. People are not like, like always.
Right? So the fact, look, if the exemptions are taken, that means this law is going to be gutted. We don't want this law to be gutted. We want this class size to succeed. We're not here to, we're not here to rip apart or repeal the law. We want to make sure that it succeeds. And the way that everyone else is proceeding with this, this is a train wreck waiting to happen. We don't want this to happen. We want the class size law to be implemented successfully. That's why we're here.
As you know, the exceptions provide additional time for the, for the class size law to be implemented in the schools that received the exception, which is exactly what you recommended, an extended period of time. So it's strange to me that that was ignored.
We don't want exemptions. We want this done methodically, so that it's implemented successfully. That's all.
We'll, we'll take the last question, and we absolutely have to end here.
You just said that yeah, other people who want to implement this law, but it's still stale, like their plans, as you've been reiterating all night, are magic thinking games are crazy. Can you explain um, what your plan is going to look like? Because you said, hey, you want to free and form, and you're not sure how long these days are going to take. Are we adding five years, ten years, fifteen years? So the people who are working with the law, as they begin to part the magical fingers, those who are coming in all versions are the people we're looking at. You sure? If you didn't, you you said, and I wrote it down, you didn't do any research about the numbers uh, because the numbers weren't available to you. But we should trust you, right?
Well, if you paid attention to the
I was paying attention.
I said that we developed, you know, phases. We think that it's best to be implementing phases, and we did not specifically did not provide timelines because we don't have the information to specify how long it takes. And I said specifically that we want the uh, knowledgeable people to come in and say, all right, it's going to take X number of years, X number of dollars to do this. This is not something that we're going to answer.
Those people already came in. Those people aren't here. There are people in the room who are experts in these positions, but they're not your position, so they're magic thinking. But we should trust you, the person who has the value.
Let's move on to the next question.
So we, thank you so much for everyone's attendance. We, it's eight forty-eight PM and we are going to end tonight's meeting. I apologize that we did not get to the questions on the chat and we will make sure to ju, to write down all your questions and uh, to get back to you. And we will bring your questions to Senator Lou on Thursday evening, uh, when he have his education events. Um, we will also share the flyer for Thursday's event if, if, if you, if you need. Um, thank you again so much for your attendance. This is, this was a great discussion. Um, and our next CC twenty-five general um, meeting is next Wednesday, December sixth at seven PM. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Oh, have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.